Good morning, it's December 12th, 10 o'clock. And all three county commissioners are here. I ask that we rise for a moment of silent meditation and then a pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We will have consents and approvals and Ms. Colleen Coon will do it for us.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have six exoneration listings for $848.13. We have minutes from the November 21st and 28th meeting and the emergency meeting on December 4th. Vouchers, General County, $95,395.05. 911, $2,063.65. Chestnut Ridge, $1,0050.310. Camp Muffley, $1,024.87. Mason Dixon, $1,001.47.90. Assessor's valuation, $1,174.44. Morgantown Industrial, $5,383.91. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $89,291.60. Mason Dixon Park, $257.21. Assessor's valuation, $5,786.50 for a voucher total of $202,128.23. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, the Development Authority, Building Commission, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board. We have fiduciary orders for December 12th, 2018 and then a separate matter regarding the Hermit Floyd estate that you'll have to do so.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Also now, we want to talk specifically about the other fiduciary requests.
Yes, the other request, make sure I get the names right. Sorry, the actual request isn't in my file. Carrie, what was the name on the other state?
Uh, Hermit Floyd.
Okay, the state of Hermit Floyd. We had a request for, I lost my post-it note.
It was an objection to the final settlement.
It was an objection to the final settlement. I would move that we refer this to fiduciary commissioner and assuming in that motion, I'd like to recommend that when we send notice out of the fiduciary commissioner's hearing, that we put a notice to the individual that they have no later than 30 days to place their deposit or the matter will come back up to us for final settlement.
Okay.
Second.
Poppy moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Introduction to new employees, Sheriff Perry Palmer and Mr. Jared Kerr.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes.
Good morning.
Introducing Jared Kerr. Jared will be starting as a full-time process transport officer on the 16th of December at a starting salary of $2,557.20 per month.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Look forward to having you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Is there any elders? Okay. Oh, you're all leaving. Okay. Comments from the public. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak from the public? We'll open this up. And the answer is no, we will close it. Good. Resolution, West Virginia Local Economic Development Grant Program. Is there someone to represent them? I didn't know if they were going to show up or not.
Well, this was actually on the agenda for last week.
Right.
And we have the resolution in front of us.
Right.
Colleen, would you go ahead and read the resolution?
I can. West Virginia Certified Development Community Program in fiscal year 2019 Local Economic Development Grant Program. Resolution of participation and cooperation. Whereas the County Commission of Montegalia County, the county's governing body, is interested in the economic well-being of its citizenry and the community at large and whereas the County Commission of Montegalia County is prepared to support appropriate efforts within the community to become prepared to promote economic development and whereas the West Virginia Development Office offers certified development community and local economic development grant programs that are specially designed to aid West Virginia communities become better equipped for industrial and related economic development and whereas Montegalia County was initially awarded CDC status in April 1994 and it has been renewed every three years since then in 1997, 2000, 2003, 2006, 2009, 2012, 2015, and 2018. Therefore, be it resolved by the County Commission of Montegalia County that our county wishes to continue participation in the CDC program and to participate in the fiscal year 2019 LEDG program and that the leadership of this county fully realizes these programs require continued dedicated effort and be it further resolved that the CDC and LEDG programs require the existence of a local economic development organization and this governing body designates the Morgantown Area Economic Partnership as representing our community for the purpose of participating in these programs. This resolution is in full effect upon its adoption this 12th day of December 2018.
Move for approval with discussion?
Second.
Poppy moved in second.
And as you can see, this is just a yearly recertification that we have to do, so it's pretty much, yeah, we approve this every year.
Okay, seeing that no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I know Justin Psycho was planning to be here last week. I will ask, I'll hold to see if he's going to come later. I don't know if he's coming or not. I thought he was, but it may have been something that happened. At this time, we're fortunate to have both Mr. Jason Donahue and Delegate Joe Statler to come to talk about the Mountaineer Trail Network. If you want to just come up to the podium and we're very excited to see you and welcome, Joe.
Good morning and season's greetings to you.
Season's greetings.
Good morning. I, uh, we're thrilled to be before you today to bring this concept forward, which was the same as last year and give you an update on where we feel this particular bill will be moving in the legislature. Unfortunately, I'll not be there to move it forward, but I have talked to Senator Clements on the Senate side and he's very much willing to take the ball and roll with this and he's very much signed on to what the bill does, how it does. It's being drafted now. It's basically the same draft that was on the House side. They will just take it over on the Senate side and draft it. Couple of reasons to give you that we felt that the Senate would be a more appropriate area to start it this year is, one, last year, we ran into some problems onto the House side with the attorney that was handling the case and it was unfortunate that we didn't get it through. I mean, that thing was so close to making it, it wasn't funny and, and what really started moving this bill along for me last year was I went over to the Senate side and there's an attorney over there that works with judiciary, Sarah Canterbury, and she was very much interested in this bill and had a lot of knowledge in that area. I'm not sure if she's a mountain biker. I'd say she was. She called this summer. She had met with some groups and she was very much letting me know that she wanted to see this move. So, when you have somebody that enthusiastic, you put the bill in her hand to start moving it. So, I think that will be great. We have talked to Senator Trump, who will be judiciary chair again on the Senate side as far as I know, and already talked to him about the bill moving forward. If you remember last year, when it got before judiciary on the Senate side, it got bogged down with a bunch of amendments on it. So, I have been working with Jason again to look at it and, by the way, let me give credit to Jason for all this. I can guarantee you to anyone out there, I didn't come up with this idea of the mountain bike trail. I do endorse it and believe it's a great thing, but he's certainly the brains behind it that wanted to move this forward. So, I don't want to take credit for that in any way. But I will tell you that Senator Trump also pledged, you know, they would move it forward and as I said, we're hoping that we have it, we won't have the amendments we had last year on the Senate side. They know the bill a little bit better. We do have one correct, one change, it's not a correction. Mineral County has asked strongly to be included in this and I believe Jason and I have been looking at it. We really don't see where there'd be a big issue if that's not contiguous with the rest of the counties, but basically it's made so anyone could pick up on it. Once the legislation is out there, they could come back and ask to be included in. And I will tell you, this has got to go before GovOrg on the House side, no matter where outcome on the Senate side, and that is chaired by Delegate Gary Howe and he's very much interested in this bill and, but he wants his county included in that. So, with that, I, if you've got any questions of Jason or I, and again, I want to introduce Jason Donahue. You guys all know him anyhow and...
Oh, thank you, Joe. Now, I will say this. To me, this is a really simple concept and you guys have, I want to say thank you to the commission because you guys were the first person that heard it and basically if you hadn't said we want to take a look at it, we probably wouldn't have gotten past that. So, thank you. Joe did a wonderful job and he's selling himself short because last year, this bill made it through the House, made it through the Senate. So, it passed both houses of the legislature. It simply didn't get reconciled between the two because as Joe pointed out, there were some, in my humble opinion, not meaningful revisions on the Senate side. They were okay. They weren't going to take away. They weren't going to add anything. I mean, they're fine. But at the end of the day, because of those changes, the House had to reconcile them and from my understanding, it got down to how the bill was titled. Now, that's a technical term. It's not just the, you know, the writing at the top of the page, but it's the references to all the impacts of state code and so forth. So, I mean, it's a pretty important and very technical thing, but literally, the attorneys were working out the details. There was no reason that it wouldn't go forward. So, I mean, to say that it came close is an understatement. I mean, it was the last night. If we had one more day, probably would have been fine. So, one of the things, based upon our experience with the TIF bill that had a similar fate but was resurrected by Jeff Kessler, you know, in a special session right after, we don't have that same sense of priority or there was not the same sense of priority for this particular bill. But now that we've gotten to the new upcoming legislative session, what I would like to try to do is to create that sense of priority. And so, basically what we think and I believe is since it passed the legislature, once it goes through once, they're going to be like, oh yeah, we did this last year, we'll be okay. We need to work on the executive, the governor's office, to be 100% candid because anything that the governor wants has a better chance of happening. So, what I would ask the commission to do and Mayor Johnson's here from Westover, we actually have good local support. The cities expressed, city Morgantowns expressed their support, the mayor of Westover embraced it last year, I think I can say, and would like to see it. So, the idea behind this is to have these trails right in the middle of town, right in the middle of people, not out in the middle of nowhere, but right here so it's easy for people to come in. Some of these statistics I found, since we started this, Oregon has $400 million of tourism spending related to mountain biking every year. So, mountain biking is the second or third most active outside activity of any. Number one's hiking. So, the state director of, of the state parks basically said hiking's number one, camping's number two, water sports, I think, is three, but in West Virginia, mountain biking's four. Across the country, it's, mountain biking's actually a little bit higher. So, mountain biking is here. I mean, it, it works. And, and so I think that what it really comes down to is this is an economic development deal and that is the most important reason to do it. It's not just health, wellness, all that kind of stuff, which is also a benefit, but this is about increasing our revenue for our communities and our state. And the West Virginia Forward Program identifies higher-end tourism as an important part of the economic development diversification efforts. So, this is consistent with that. I think WVU actually with their team in Charleston helped get it through last year. So, this is consistent with that. So, what I'd like to do, if we could, is ask the commission to publicly say we endorse it, we want to see it happen. And then the second thing is, is ask, and I think you guys had some conversations with the other commissions in the area, if you could reach out to them and say, hey, we'd like you to do this and make sure that you tell your delegates and senators that we support it, but most importantly, if they have an opportunity to tell the governor's office, that would be much appreciated. Because at the end of the day, this thing came really close to making it in its first attempt, which is better than the Hatfield McCoy Trail bill did in the early 90s. It took three or four years for that to happen. So, we should be able to get it through this year, but in order for that to happen, we need you guys and your help to actually make it a priority for the folks in Charleston. You can help us do that if that's possible, but we came really, really close last year.
Did either one of, want to speak before I speak?
No, I, we wholeheartedly endorse this from the first time that you brought it to us and I appreciate your efforts, Joe. You're right, you did sell yourself a little short. It was a hurtling effort to get it where it was and we only missed by inches, so I don't know whether, whether, whatever format, you know, we can provide that support and a resolution in regards to just our, you know, publicly, you know, reaffirming our support for it. Just please don't, don't hesitate to let us know where we can help you.
You guys do a nice job and Ben's here with the local media, but I know you guys participated in the morning, what's the talk show? You guys do that regularly. I mean, it's...
Some of us.
Please, please, you know, please feel free because at the end of the day, the more people talk about it, the more people believe it's a reality and so when people think that it's likely to happen, it becomes, it builds its own momentum.
What might help is some details that makes it easier for the public to understand, like what we intend to do, how we intend to take land that you couldn't do anything else with and utilize it and, you know, make it recreational activity. And the biggest, the reason for this bill is to address the insurance issue.
Private property.
And that's what people need to understand. We need to make it simpler for them to understand that, you know, we're not talking about, we're talking about doing something with what we're, the area that we currently can't do anything else with.
Right. I mean, it literally is building a trail that's this wide. And I actually, based upon the statistics with hiking being the number one thing, there's no reason that these trails can't be used for more than one purpose. You know, an ATV trail and a hiker aren't necessarily the safest thing because of the speed and things like that. Mountain bikers don't go that fast. So, I mean, you know, people can get out of the way and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I would say that it can be used for hiking and if hiking's number one, if you appeal to the highest number of people, your chances of success are greater. So, I mean, we can make this thing so that, you know, we have really nice hiking, trail running, whatever you want to call it, but I mean, it can appeal to more than just one segment.
Yeah, and I personally spend a lot of time on the rail trails in Mon County. They do get really crowded and you have a whole, you know, no matter where you go, you've got this whole section next to the rail trail that you can't do anything with. You know, so you can work with that to turn that into, you know, mountain biking and stuff and you get traffic off the rail trails, you know, specifics on the bike track for a lot of, because primarily, there's a lot of walkers, a lot of, you know, you know, our resources we have already are kind of overused, so having something that would supplement that, you know, is kind of a no-brainer.
The interesting thing that happened too is we reached out to a couple of property owners. I say a couple, maybe 10, but I mean, we end up with 1,000, 2,000 acres just based upon a handful of properties. So, and these properties are located really close to economic centers, hotels and things like that. And I went back and looked at the, the West Virginia Forward Study and one of the things they want to do is, you know, have more hotels in southern West Virginia to take advantage of the outdoor adventure tourism already. Well, I mean, I'll tell you, that's going to be really hard from somebody who sold to a lot of hotels. Hotels are expensive and they have to have a number of customers all the time. We have the hotels. We have the most expensive part of the tourism equation in north central West Virginia. That's already here. We need to provide the least expensive attraction, which is a dirt path, it's about this wide.
And I will say to you, Commissioner Skor, that two of the issues that came up heavily last year when looking at this bill, and I will say that all the delegates and senators in this region supported this bill last year overwhelmingly, as did most in the state. But the two issues that came up repeatedly, one was liability issues. Can they just take the bike and go out onto property which I'm sensitive to, that the person doesn't want them on, can they just take off? No. The answer that the bill, you know, has provisions in there, it says, is voluntary, people has to give up their property, you know, to allow this to happen. And the second thing was the trails. Will it just link onto the trails and put all these mountain bikes on the betrayal, on the trail? And no, it does not. Now, you have an interesting concept there that I never thought about and Jason probably has again. You can tell that he has studied this and this make, this is what makes a great bill for a delegate or a senator to take forward, is someone that has done the heavy legwork to it. And, but what's to say if there's a property available adjacent to the trail, that you can make a separate trail because it does get a little crowded. This one with a lot of people walking sometimes doesn't like the intrusion of a lot of bikes on it and we're talking, you know, the mountain bikes a lot more. And so, if there's a way to make a trail that's off to the side, it's mountain biking and other uses, that's very intriguing. I like that.
And Morgantown's trying to do a lot with their riverfront.
Right, exactly. So, it is and the biggest thing is mountain bikes are the number, the largest segment of bicycle sales. So, out of all the sales, something like 40 million in the country, 24% of them, the largest percentage are mountain bikes. So, they have more mountain bikes than any other type of mountain bike. So, this is a numbers game. We're trying to appeal to the biggest number of people we possibly can. And there's so many other benefits too, just health and wellness and all this kind of stuff, but economic development wise, you know, if you're trying to attract a certain type of business that needs a certain type of employee, those employees look for quality of life issues, so, you know, how do they spend their time when they're not working? Having something to do is really important. So, I mean, all of this stuff compounds and there are exponential tangents that you can go down, but the cold hard reality of it is, is for a return on investment, I don't think we can find a better economic development diversification tool than this one. And, and, and so we can figure out how to do those. WVU, I mean, I was thinking about it on the way down, we can work with the civil engineering department to design these things. I mean, you know, we don't have to go out and spend a bunch of money hiring people to do some of this stuff. We can work collectively to figure out how to provide work experience for people that's valuable, tangible, and they can actually get value out of it without having to spend a lot of money. So, this thing can be put together relatively inexpensively, I think. So, but we can't ask people to contribute money, to contribute time until we get the bill passed because without that, it makes sense. I'm sorry, I ran.
No, it's good. Do you have anything?
Well, I think if it's, you know, into the recreation proponent that, you know, that the governor has proposed, you know, I mean, he's willing to push it, we're willing to push it, obviously. I applaud your efforts. I really can't add too much more to what you've said already, except for the fact that we have been talking about this for a year and in any discussion that I had with any legislator, I would bring this up. Now, quite frankly, a lot of times I did refer to it as the beer trail from one brewery to another microbrewery, but quite frankly, also, I think that's another point of the economic development that you're going to see. You know, some of the announcements that were coming forth that the governor's granting, I think are going to take into play and I'll dwell on that later, but still, we'll do whatever we can, I think, to further this cause.
Thinking out of the box right away, what we could do is next, we put a resolution, endorse it. We could then also send it to the other county commissioners because, and just so you know, January 3rd, we are going to have a meeting with the surrounding counties with the north central road caucus. It would be a great time for them and basically to inform them, so you have now all that input. And the other thing you were talking about, economic, what about us if, and I'm going to ask Joe if maybe the contact would be to Chris Warner, because isn't he in charge of rural?
Yes.
What a perfect example you're talking about of connecting, so I could see this as another, and maybe that's just one more thing and give a PR for the governor, say now you're combining several different departments. So, yeah, we could definitely have that and prepare that for that meeting and the delegates will be there at that meeting on the 3rd. So, as a group, we could go down and, and Amy Summers is the, you know...
Majority Leader.
Majority Leader. So, it's just one more thing and that she could do and, and you said it's really not a real major cost factor. It, you know, so, yeah, I think we could do that if you'd agree, we'd just come up with a, I think we even had a resolution last year. We just need to modify.
Reaffirm our...
Reaffirm it. How's that and then send it to the other counties.
That'd be great.
And then also propose, announce that the road caucus, just because they're all going to be there.
That'd be great. Because at the end of the day, people respond, if they think it's a winner, they like it.
Yes. Everybody jumps on.
Right. So, we want to try to create the impression that and I think the road opportunity is huge.
Because we're right there.
And, and Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think somehow just making sure that the governor's office knows that it's...
Right.
Supported by the biggest number of people possible. We just need to convey that so that they know it's not just, you know, small group or, you know, one person's idea. But if we can get that, then I think that'll put us over there. Because the tourism director, Chelsea Rubens...
Yes, she's very much online.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll put that on the agenda next week.
But at the end of the day, we need them to make it their own and the only way I know to do that is for them to know that we here...
And I think the other thing, the completion of Corridor H will be able to funnel these individuals into our area to enjoy this recreational development. So, that also, I think, is a big announcement that the governor made.
And the thing that I'd like to point out to you is, and I don't want to get, you know, get deep into the Hatfield McCoy Trail because they do closely monitor anything that goes on that they, that they feel might threaten the Hatfield McCoy Trail.
Right.
And I understand that because it is so huge for them and it's other parts of state. But the thing that I'd like to say is, basically, when we put this out there, we're not honing it and saying it just has to be in this region. We, you know, we, we feel that there's reasons why it will work better here than a lot of other areas and there is reasons and Jason's went over several of them, but at the same time, we're not being greedy in saying, you know, if you want a small trail somewhere out, this bill doesn't preclude that basically from happening.
It's a statewide trail.
Yeah, you can, you can join into it because last year, that was one of the amendments that actually took this clear into the southern tier to look at some areas down there because there is an interest down in that area to do some of this. And I know Jason, I basically would call back every time, we was on the line a good bit talking last year and I would call back and say, do you feel this is a huge issue? You're the one that studied it out and know the most about it. So, at the end of the day, it got a good vetting. A lot of that won't have to happen this year.
Right.
But knowing legislation, you never know until it's, it's done as to what be, but he's correct. And we have reached out to the governor's office with it. We do not have the bill yet coming from the Senate side. I just stopped, talked to Senator Clements yesterday and he's very, like I said, he's very much online and he was pushing for it. I was hoping that the bill was possible because I would have taken it down to Bob Ashley, who is the governor's liaison for the legislators and presented it to him to say, you know, we need to get this, so we'll be working on those.
Okay. Okay. Well, good. We appreciate it and we appreciate all the legwork you put in last year to get it going this year and, and I think you need to be accommodated for that, but so, we appreciate that and we'll keep you informed.
I appreciate that and I will tell you that I very much will go down and, you know, work with moving this bill forward this year also. I have a little more time now, so I won't have, I won't have to call up on WVU when I'm caught up in a meeting alone to represent it over on the Senate side and they was very good about doing that and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Great. Good news. Colleen, do you have any grants?
I do. I have the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $1,621.89. The Day Report Center Grant in the amount of $16,615.28. VOCA in the amount of $5,505.05. The Governor's Highway Safety Program Click-It or Ticket in the amount of $1,668.04. Impaired Driving, $3,355.82. Distracted Driving, $1,786.71. And Safe Communities in the amount of $97.99.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Didn't know we could get a $97.00 grant.
$97.00 reimbursement, that's good. Correspondence, letter of resignation received from Brenda Cogar for the Pleasant Valley Public Service District. Do we need to approve that?
You do with everything.
Move to accept the resignation.
Second.
Poppy moved in second to accept the resignation. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And do we need to?
Make a, add that to our list?
We'll be adding it next week. Yes.
Okay. First quarter levy report, so Mountaineer United Soccer Club submitted their report.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other correspondence?
Yes, sir.
Unfinished business, is there any unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
New business, consideration of requisition number twenty-four for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Sub Account.
This request is in the amount of three hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and five cents.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Reports, oh, is there any other new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Reports from elected officials. Sure, please, come on down, thank you.
You hear me, Mayor?
No, you have, the way that our system works, we have to put you down there.
Get you on camera.
We want to see your face.
I just want to add to what Mark and Joe had talked about, you know, we just did a loop rail in our park, trail in our park, and I think our grant was thirty-six thousand total. We had a participation of like seventy-two hundred, twenty percent on all these grants. And the good thing about that, at the same time, the other day, we got awarded a two-hundred forty thousand dollar grant for our phase five of our sidewalk project. Well, that phase five is going to go from here to here for that much money. Our trail is going to go from here to that wall for the amount of money that we talked about, and the key there is, is that this is not a real expensive endeavor. And the lay of the land is going to dictate what you're going to be able to do and what you can't do. Because our trail, I was expecting something different, to be honest with you. But our trail, you have to kind of look two or three times to make sure it's even there, because as wide as this podium in places, it goes around trees, but that's what the people like, so.
Yeah.
And the other thing, and the other thing I'd like to mention, we had an incident about two weeks ago with a slip on a hillside that impacted our sewer line. Well, this wasn't in the city of Westover, it was right next door. And I just want to try to just get this out there with you guys, so you have a little something else to think about. I know you don't have enough to worry about, so. Without zoning or being in a municipality, some of these things that these developers are doing could possibly impact a lot of different people other than themselves. In other words, the slope that they put this sewer line in would have never been, we would have never approved that. It was outside of the city, county doesn't have the zoning in that area. So, that's just one, one of the things that we need to kind of concentrate on is the lack of zoning in some areas, especially the areas that are going to be developed, that we know are going to be developed. Because what happened with West Run, you know, no road out there ahead, all the buildings, you know, that's, but that's not your fault, but I think that that's something that we need to keep maybe in the back of our head, because it can impact. This is going to impact us. It's our sewer line, we didn't put it in, but as soon as we get one customer that pays, it becomes ours. So, we're responsible for it. Now, we're not necessarily responsible for the slip, but we have to maintain that line, you know, so we're probably going to try to hold it up while they're fixing it. So, it's an issue, and it's something that you may or may not have thought about before, but it can impact a larger area than what it did us. So, just something to think about.
Can I respond real quick?
Sure.
Mayor's there. Yeah, we certainly, it's something that we've been working on. Right now, we have our land use ordinance out for, it's being scrubbed by a contractor, somebody we contracted in to kind of get it to the point where we'd bring it back up to, to look at it. So, we, we, we don't, we realize that we need to address those type of issues, and we haven't, we haven't forgot about them. Main reason I wanted to talk to you while you were up here is the last MMPO meeting, we had to discuss whether to move the MIP, the Morgantown Industrial Park Project up to Tier One. And there's a bunch of things involved with that, so that, that, and it was Delegate Statler that actually had put it on the agenda to consider moving it. Well, there's a lot of things involved with moving stuff to Tier One, and even though we'd like to make sure that it gets that status sooner rather than later, we had to delay it till January's meeting so that we can have two public hearings. There was concern that if we moved it to the Tier One status without public input, that the state could reject it. So, we wanted to make sure that we didn't cause us any, any further delays, and I know you weren't at that meeting, so I wanted to give you kind of an update. So, that, the next meeting, we fully intend, well, we have to have, we'll get in the cart before the horse. We have to have two public meetings, and that's what I want to make sure you're aware of. First one's January ninth from four to seven at the Mountain Line Depot, and the second one would be in conjunction with the MMPO's Citizen Advisory Committee on the tenth, and that's at six o'clock in the office downstairs. Yeah, in the MMPO office. So, again, this drastically affects Westover. The commission has stated in the past that this is something that we're very in favor of, that it needs to be a higher priority, and we're all working through the bureaucracy, but we're trying to move this as quickly as possible, and it's really important that we get people that are interested in the project, one way or the other, to come out to those public meetings and give us input, so that then the policy board has the feedback to address in our January meeting.
Very good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other elected officials? Seeing none, Ed, I think it's your turn.
Well, first of all, I would like to congratulate Amy Summers. I've known Amy for well over thirty years. She has been named Majority Leader of the House. I think this is going to be a great benefit to North Central West Virginia to have such representation coming, you know, from, from us. Also, I'd like to congratulate Jennifer Reeves, Mile and Park Elementary, being named as the Milken Family Foundation, the Oscars of Teaching, as was written. I think that this shows how important education is in our area, that we are recognized for it. I did attend last Friday the reception that Dr. Gee gave, the holiday reception in WVU. It was well-attended, that was at Blaney House. And we did, of course, Tom and I represented commission Monday at the meeting of the announcement by Westridge and Lidos. I'll let him talk about that. I think of particular importance, just on what we've discussed today, the quality of life issues, that we saw a three million dollar grant to Friends of Cheek. We saw another grant that was going to extend the trails from Rolesburg. So, you're seeing, even though these are in Preston County, they're not directly in Monmouth County, these trails that are being created will be an adjunct, I think, to what we're looking at right now. Also, the individual city grants for Buchanan, for Bridgeport, for Westover, for Schenston. This is testament to the vitality of what's going on in our area. I, I think this really, you know, points out what we're, what we're all working for. We all have common causes, we have individual causes sometimes, but really, we want the entire area to prosper. I did attend a public, or excuse me, a private welcome reception for David Goldberg, the new CEO of Mon General Health Systems. And then last night, I represented commission at Main Street Awards, which was a nice little function, and put the emphasis, I think, and we did have some private discussions on perhaps involvement of commission as well into some of the entities that could be held in the city of Morgantown. And lastly, on this Saturday, at the Readiness Center at nine o'clock, Breakfast with Santa, my 4-H group will be putting this on with Santa's appearance coming at ten o'clock, and of course, Ed the Elf, second class, will be present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Last week, obviously, it was weird not having our meeting last week, but I, even though I was, I was still working on Wednesday, we had the federal day off though, but I had the funeral procedure, or events going on, on my second monitor, and I was kind of glued to it. It was very impressive, you know, it was a very well-done, it was just, make you feel good as an American at just watching all the events, and again, most of politics is, you know, you, you see the bad side of it, and it was good to, you know, for at least a day to have nothing but the good side of it, and, you know, that, we are all public servants, we all are trying to do the best possible, and removing politics from a funeral event was heartwarming. Last week, we did have the Christmas tree parade, and I represented, and the tree lighting, and I represented commission on behalf for the tree lighting, and it all went very well. This is the first, first year that we've done this on the new Courthouse Square, and I look, I hope for it to be an annual thing. You know, twenty months ago, when we started the whole project of renovating Courthouse Square, there's events like that, that, you know, a bunch of kids, a bunch of people standing around singing carols, 4-H was, you know, serving hot chocolate. It was great, that's what I think we envisioned, the type of events. And, you know, the, the actual lighting of the tree, it's not a religious symbol, it's a symbol that transcends politics and religion, so it was, it was a great event. Friday, I went to look at the property out of Daybrook that GSA is offering us, and we're considering as a, as a commission to, to turn that property over to the Development Authority. I'm going to have a follow-up visit with Delegate Statler to talk about, you know, it doesn't look like we'd be able to do a lot of economic development, but that might be something that we can take over and turn over to our parks, or to an organization that can, you know, have use of it. So, we're still looking into that. This morning, I had our IT Progress meeting, and I'll update you guys in our regular business reports. Tomorrow, I have the Red Team and the Development Authority meeting, and then things are starting to die down a little bit. Next Tuesday, we have the Extension Building Meeting, and next Thursday, they have the Mile and Park Board Meeting, but obviously, with the holiday schedule, things are starting to slow down a little bit. I do want to thank Main Street Morgantown, and specifically Dominic Claudio, who donated the tree on the Courthouse Square, and it's a beautiful tree. Then the last thing in regards to the announcement, yes, I wasn't able to go to the announcement, I had prior work commitment, but I, I can say that Lidos is going to be a good partner. I've had a working relationship with them and their predecessor, ICAIC, for the past twenty-five years, and I think they're a great addition to the community. I mean, their enhanced addition to the community is going to be welcome, and I'm looking forward to that, and a number of other announcements in that development. That's all I have.
Thank you. First, there's going to be a food giveaway this Saturday, and I personally want to thank Kerry Blaney again for allowing us to use the Election Center. It's probably our most favorite center, because everyone could be inside while they're waiting along, and so we really do appreciate that. Second, I did reach out to Bill Kowicki, and, and he is in agreement, he's going to set up a meeting with me and several city council members to talk about this nonprofit meeting that we're hoping to have in January, to talk about funding and consolidation and working together and collaboration, so that is moving forward. I also had a meeting with Mountain Line, WVU Public Health, United Way, and I'm pleased to report that we are hoping to have an announcement and a program by January third up and running, which will be taking care of the Medicare and self-pay area for one year, and that will take care of those individuals who need like kidney dialysis treatment and to doctor's appointments, and for senior citizens. Right now, there is a void, because in touch and concern doesn't have, went out and so quickly, so we are working on that, and I believe we will have a plan by January third. I do want to say also, I'm thrilled that we have our meeting this afternoon, and WestTV is planning to tape it and upload it, so the public will be able to see our meeting with the State Tax Office, and also the MAP program, and explain that, so I believe they will be only able to tape the public portion of the program, I want to get that clear, and then we'll go into executive session, but eighteen months coming, I'm thrilled to finally see what they have to say. And finally, as Ed and Sean said, the Westridge development, it, Lidos, it's real exciting, and I think people don't understand, this company had two small offices, but they had the opportunity to leave, and they didn't. They chose to stay here and under one roof, and were building a campus-type setting for high-tech, and it is up to two hundred and fifty jobs, and it's the start of numerous announcements that we know we can finally start making, and, and it really is exciting. And I was fortunate enough to be on the Hoppy Crutchable Show to promote that, and the state to understand that we're doing all this with this development and the private development without any state funds. I mean, some of the other areas have ten million dollars to build over in the Eastern Panhandle or other areas. We're doing that all together, and, and again, I want to say the kudos out to Delegate Statler, who helped work with us and pushed to make sure that this district was developing, continues to grow, and I, and again, I want to say how much I'm going to miss talking with him. I think he got tired of me calling him all the time, but he responded every week, and I hope that we have that continuing support with the members for the new delegates and so on. So, with that.
One thing I'd like to add to what you were talking about, um, I appreciate you talking to Mayor Kowicki, and again, this is something that we all can work together on. Each year, we go through a grant process where we're doing one thing, and they're doing one thing, and we're not comparing notes in regards to all of our, all of our nonprofits. And this started out of last year's budget process, where we really want, and we, as we're reading grants, we're like, well, they do this, and they do this, and they do this, and why don't we compare notes, and whoever does it, you know, find out a way where we can, you know, segregate stuff and let people do what they do best, but not every, have everybody spinning her wheels on the same process. So, this, this nonprofit town hall, or whatever, that we'd like to bring together, is to that end, is not only to, not to restrict nonprofits, but to figure out how we can better help them.
And expand the services.
And expand the services that they provide. So, this, this community does a wonderful job of, you know, having all these, all these volunteers and all these organizations that do wonderful things, but no one talks together, and that's what we're trying to do, is have a more of a cohesive effort. So, I appreciate you starting that.
I think also, this bill out of us, you know, deciding to do this with the arts.
Right. Mike want to explain that?
We, we realized that we were not possibly all the time the individuals that should be awarding money for this art group and this art group, and so, we're able to put together a coalition.
Well, maybe just Ed, but not Tom and I.
From that, we were able then to have contributions come in from the Community Foundation, from the city of Morgantown, to a group that will, that does now oversee these, this grant awarding, and so hopefully, we'll be able to create such a, whatever you wish to term it, but a, a committee that will then oversee, and then possibly then get more money coming into this, these arenas that we can award out for nonprofits. So, that being said, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Move in second, where you are adjourned. Thank you.